We want to make sure that we're social distancing out there. We have a nice little group here this morning. And we try to, I don't think it's, the way it's marked up is six, six feet apart. But anyway, we want to make sure that we're not guilty of spreading. And I know you're supposed to wear your mask, but I, when I'm presiding, I just rather, I want everybody to hear me. And I want to be clear, so I, you know, I'll take mine, I'll take mine off. But I still believe in following the guidelines. So this morning, I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meeting is broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This morning, the Gaston City Council will not come to order in the absence of our city clerk. Our assistant city clerk, Jennifer, was served as a clerk of this session. The chair calls on Assistant Clerk Jennifer for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. God, we pray that during this time of COVID, that you'll provide the protection that needs to be for especially our elderly, our poor. God, those who are trying their best just to stay healthy. We just pray that you'll wrap your arms around them, help them to feel our love and our prayers even today. Be with this council, give them wisdom in the decisions they have to make. God, we just pray as we move forward through this time that you'll guide our steps. And God, we promise to give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we'll have Mr. Golden to come and give us an update for the EMA.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name's Mark Golden. I'm an employee with the EMA. It's always a pleasure to be here. Ms. Catherine sends her regards today. She's tied up on several projects. We are on the rise, if you didn't know. Apparently, the whole country is upticking right now. We are rising above levels we saw in early September, and the numbers continue to climb. Currently in Alabama, there's 220,848 cases and 3,301 dead. In the last 14 days in Alabama, 25,304 cases have been reported. And that's out of 112,171 total tests given. So that's a little under, a little, little under 22% or so. I didn't do the math, but that's in the last 14 days statewide. Hospitalized, we have 22,716 since March, and presumed recovered is a little over 88,000 in the state. In Etowah County, the last report was 5,440 cases since March with 61 dead. That's up one from last week. In the last 14 days, there have been 867 new cases reported in Etowah County. That's over 100 cases a day. Oh, I'm sorry, that's not right. That's a little over 50 a day. We've administered collectively over 35,000 tests in Etowah County since March. A reminder to everyone that the testing sites in Gaston that are listed on the Health Department website are the Roberta Watts Clinic, Quality of Life Health Services, American Family Care, and the Etowah County Health Department. I would suggest that anyone needing a test to call first, because we've rode by several of these places, and the parking lots are packed, and the waiting rooms are packed. We're still looking at the same age groups that we've been looking at that are the most prolific in cases. Still, the 25 to 49 is at 38% of infection of all the cases. And the 65-plus still leads the percentages of people infected who have died. The week ending November the 7th, of the tests taken that week, 10% of those tests were positive. That's statewide, I believe. Some alarming statistics from healthcare workers. Since March, 11,501 healthcare workers have contracted COVID-19 statewide. Of those, long-term care facility employees, nursing homes, assisted living, are 3,689. That's in nursing homes, where our 65-plus group is housed, a lot of them. Of those, residents in nursing homes and long care facilities, 7,084. It's okay. It happens to everyone, believe me, I know. 7,084 residents of long-term care facilities have contracted COVID-19 since March. Hospitalizations are on the uptick also since, since March. Of the, of the roughly 23,000 people hospitalized, 2,158 of those have been in ICU statewide. And on ventilators, 1,246 in the state since March. Hospitals are on the uptick. Riverview has suspended visitation now. I don't know what Gaston Regional has done. We hope to clarify that on the conference call tomorrow. Schools, last week, a Tallahassee school started virtual learning. This week, there are discussions on the, in the schools that continue, as Mr. Reddick indicated. And at the county school level, discussions are ongoing. I know the Hokes Bluff schools have gone virtual only because of coronavirus and the uptick there. So this is on the rise again. And with Thanksgiving coming up, and families getting together, and visiting and traveling, this causes a lot of concern in the healthcare community and the EMA community, city government too, I'm sure. You know, how can you tell someone not to have Thanksgiving? Well, I don't know. We have, of course, we have guidance to follow. Social distance, wear a mask. You know, don't congregate in big groups. You know, if you can have Thanksgiving outside, have it outside. You know, bring your own food to Thanksgiving. Don't share salad dressing with someone. I mean, you know, don't use the same utensils to dip with. Use disposable everything. I just, it's not going to be the normal Thanksgiving, and everyone needs to try to prepare for that somehow. And if you want to bring grandma to Thanksgiving, then those are concerns that we'll all have. And there's, on our website and Facebook page and Twitter page, we have some information about best practices for Thanksgiving and how to avoid some of the problems of, of social distancing and sanitizing and getting big groups together. So if y'all would like to check that out, it's there. Any questions?
What's the percentage of people, you might not know this, that they go on respirators that come off?
I don't have those numbers.
How many do I hear you said were on respirators, did you say?
Since March, there have been 1,246 patients on ventilators. And assuming those were ICU patients, of course. So that would lend to say that half of the patients in ICU were on ventilators, had to have breathing assistance. I mean, COVID-19 is a respiratory disease.
I've heard some people say this, this hadn't got over it or they really hadn't got over it yet, that it's been, I don't know, a couple of months, and they still said they hadn't got their energy back.
That is true.
And a lot of them says they hadn't got their taste or their smell either back.
Generally, the, the infection time stops 10 to 14 days after fever is gone, generally. But you can still suffer from the effects of the disease for, you know, a month, two months. As you said, people that you know have had it have still just felt very bad for several months after.
I think a lot of people don't, don't take it for real. I've had probably six people that I was good friends with that's passed away with this, and another one that passed away Saturday, so that was seven. It's real, but people just don't take it for real right now. I don't understand why.
It is real, and as the holiday season approaches, we'll have more people out, more people shopping, more fights at Walmart over dolls. I mean, you know, just, it, and if we can somehow encourage our local businesses to not enforce, but strongly suggest that admittance to the store requires a mask, that would help all. But who wants to turn down a sale? It's a, it's a fine double-edged sword that we're walking on. It's commerce versus health in that instance. And stubbornness, there's a lot of people that are still thinking this is a joke and still think this is a conspiracy and still think it's not real.
If they would talk to their family members that's lost loved ones because of this COVID-19 and see how they feel, they would, they might have a different outlook on it.
Yes, sir, you're correct. Anything else?
Yeah, just, just really quick. So you, thank you for what you shared as far as the testing centers and, you know.
Yes, sir.
What I'm about to say is not designed to dispute that, because that is very much accurate information. But just in addition to that, you know, it's probably good to note that there are, for those that have a relationship with a healthcare provider, those that frequent urgent care centers, those folks are testing as well. So, so please be mindful of that. If you have a relationship with your doctor, that doctor has the ability to, to test you as well. You know, I know that because I've been tested four times myself. And, and so you also can walk into an urgent care and where they have tests available, they are able to administer those tests as well. Family gatherings, folks, what I, what I would say to reiterate what, what's been shared with us already is that the safest places for you to be right now are at work and in school. Because generally speaking, school and work have resources that you don't have. They, they have hand sanitizer there, they have access to vital oxide, they're constantly disinfecting, they're doing a lot of things that you can't do at home. It is, is pretty clear, when you look at the contact tracing data, that most of the infection that's happening to families is coming when somebody steps outside of the, or goes back to the home and allows themselves, through bad practices, through exposure, whatever, to be exposed to someone that's contagious. So please be mindful of that as you consider these family gatherings. That's why Halloween was such a big hitter for us. We see, a lot of what we're realizing in terms of these numbers is relative to Halloween and the fact that people decided that, that, you know, Halloween was an important holiday, and they wanted to get out and interface and interact. And, and it's, it's being predicted that we're going to have some, a similar experience with Thanksgiving. So all we can ask at this point is for people to be smart. When we look, you know, when I look out across the room right now, you know, I'm tickled to death at the attendance, but you know, it's a personal, social distancing is a personal decision, and you gotta, you gotta be deliberate about it. I mean, you gotta make sure that people stay six feet away. I was trying to give Frankie a kiss earlier, and he wouldn't let me. And he told me to back up. I mean, you gotta, you gotta, you know, two arms length is kind of my standard. You want people to, to just stay back, and it's nothing personal. You know, I don't think you got the cooties or crud or any of that. I just, you know, I just want to make sure I don't get it. And if I've got it, I want to make sure I don't give it to you. So let's just be, you know, really deliberate about that kind of stuff, and that will help us get, get through this. And I, and I appreciate you for what you said about this being a respiratory disease. And I'm, I'm going to keep repeating this because I think it bears repeating. There are a lot of things about this that you can debate. You know, who's infect, you know, who's contagious, you know, when they're contagious. You know, who needs to be identified relative to contact tracing and all that good stuff. You can debate that stuff till the cows come home. But, but the reality is, is what, is exactly what he said. This is a respiratory condition, and its purpose is to attack the lungs. And the way it gets there is through the mouth and through the nose. And you decrease the chances of you becoming infected significantly if you're covering your mouth and nose. You can't dispute those things. And, and so again, that's not the last time you're going to hear me say that, because I think we get off on a lot of these tangents about all people are going to get it, oh, it's just not my time yet, oh, everybody's going to get it. No, everybody's not going to get it, especially if you're smart and you make sure that you do what you need to do to minimize the level of exposure. So I'm, I'm off my soapbox.
There are several, like you said, several other places testing. Those were the ones listed on the Department of Public Health's website. There's a ton of information there on the ADPH website and the COVID dashboard where we get all of our information, it's there also. It's updated every day at 10:00. Not only is there a page for the state and then a page for Etowah County, but every other county in the state. Jefferson County still leads in number of patients and number of deaths. I checked those numbers earlier. There's 10 or 12 pages of charts and graphs that you can extrapolate, all kind of data from. If you're a statistical person and a math person, which I'm not, you would enjoy reading through that data. And it's crunching the numbers for some would be entertaining, well, not entertaining, but would be enlightening as far as where we're really at. You know, in, in any kind of medical training, the first thing you learn is A, B, C, airway, breathing, and circulation. Well, if you've got somewhere to breathe through, then breathing is number two for life safety. That's something to think about with coronavirus.
Yeah, that's a great point.
If you can't breathe, you can't live, so.
You know, we've been, ever since this pandemic started, we've been asking people to wear a mask and all of that, but for whatever reason, some people won't wear a mask, political or whatever, which doesn't make sense to me. But if you don't want us to have to shut the economy down again, look at it like that. If everybody could wear a mask here in Etowah County for about a month and a half, see the difference? I bet it would make a big difference if we could just wear that mask, even if you don't want to. Wear, and that'd save the economy, that'd save on our nurses and doctors having to deal with this, because you know, they could catch it when they are working on people. You know, they make a mistake or something happens, and then, you know, they've got it. So we need to think about other people, but just not ourselves, you know? Love each other, and that's what we have to do. And part of loving people is we wearing this mask, social distancing, and keeping our hands sanitized. I have this with me. And people sometimes think I'm crazy, even when I play golf, I have my mask on. And I've had some of them that said, well, why do you have it on and you, you know, you 10, 15 feet away? Well, if the wind blowing, somebody got it, and they cough or sneeze, the wind could bring it over there to me. But that's, that's mean, because I don't want to catch it. I'm, I'm old and fat, and I'll probably have some problems if I, if I get it.
Well, masks and hand sanitizer are available everywhere now. When this first started back in March, you couldn't find a mask, you couldn't find hand sanitizer, you couldn't find Lysol, you couldn't find anything to disinfect with. It is available now. Using that as an excuse that I can't find a mask is, is no longer valid.
That's a great point.
I mean, you could buy a mask at the Dollar Tree for a dollar. So anyway, that's our stance on it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, have a nice day.
I apologize, Mark. I do want to apologize to you for my iPad going off. I was, somebody sent me some pictures of our trolleys, I was involved in that, in front of Walmart, and I was trying to take it off my phone, look at the iPad, and it didn't. I didn't have it on the off volume, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
You didn't know how to work.
My job is at the emergency management agency, and if there's not a radio, or a phone, or a pager, or some alarm going off, I don't know how to function. So, believe me, it was not an interruption.
As we continue with our agenda, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on November the 10th.
Shall move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of November the 6th through the 12th.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
I almost asked you if you wanted us to go slow. We had to do that a couple of weeks.
I should be measuring our turn to not be in our favor.
We have two proclamations at this time. We have, is it Janice Gaskin Meeklin here? Meeklin?
Okay.
Ms. Toles, we were asked to what district she lives in, we go down there.
I was asked to do this in the absence of the mayor. This is a proclamation from the City of Gaston. Whereas Alpha 1 antitrypsin is a protein that is produced by the liver and protects the lungs, and whereas Alpha 1, am I saying that anti?
Antitrypsin.
An antitrypsin deficiency, Alpha 1 is an inherent disorder that can lead to liver disease at any age in lung disease in adults. And whereas, while Alpha 1 can often be detected by a simple blood test, the disorder also often goes undiagnosed, especially among individuals affected by chronic obstructive pulmonary disease or misdiagnosed as asthma. And whereas treatment of Alpha 1 antiresins deficiency, including medication, augmentation therapy, and surgery is designed to manage and relive the symptoms associated with the liver and lungs. Now therefore, I Sherman Guyton of the City of Gaston, Alabama, do hereby proclaim November the, November 2020 as Alpha 1 Awareness Week throughout the state, and encourage all citizens of Gaston, Alabama to work together to raise awareness of this disease and to recognize the people it affects. Signed, sealed, and dated the 17th day of November in the year of our Lord 2000. Sherman Guyton, attested by Ivan Nelson. And if you want to say something?
Yes, I would like to. I want to thank each one of you. This is the perfect time for this proclamation for me. I am the one that's at risk, but I'm also a teacher. I'm an art teacher in your district. The noise maker, he's mine. I'll claim him. He has done a great job. He's familiar with me. I come in contact unofficially. These numbers are over 3 million on my job in 2016. Imagine the increase right now. I am one that is an advocate for this city to be aware of this condition. Our EMA, anybody, when a child has breathing problems, we often have asthma attacks back to back, but there is a free test that can be done with a simple blood test. Why is this important? COVID is one of the worst monsters I have ever been faced with. There are places that refuse to allow me to wear a mask, so I have to have an accommodation. I'm one that wants to wear a mask, so I have to have them custom made. I'm not the one that can go buy one for an inexpensive price because of the airway, the problem. And my heart is touched by you, because I know what you're doing in this district and the one that I'm in. I know what you're doing in this city to protect the children, the ones that are in the middle and those that are in the age group that are so highly affected by this. And I'm so proud of you. Thank you.
Are we folding it?
This proclamation from the City of Gaston, whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of death of cancer among men and women in the United States and in Alabama in 2020, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas to the Alabama Statewide Council Registry, there are 21,540 new lung cancer cases and 16,330 deaths because of lung cancer between 2011 and 2015 in Alabama. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is 59%, yet only 17% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage, and whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomographic can lead to the early detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality by 20% when compared to screening by C X X-rays in the nation, the National Lung Screening Trials, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas funding for lung cancer research trial falls far behind funding for research of many other cancers and additional researches needed in the early diagnosis, screening and treatment for lung cancer, as well as in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities. And whereas women diagnosed with lung cancer are more likely to be younger and never smokers, lung cancer incidence and mortality rate in women are rising relatively to men. More women die from lung cancer than breast cancer every year, and by 2035, it is expected that more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas organizations working in the Gaston community, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and the Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Gaston. Now therefore, I Sherman Guyton of the Gaston City Council do hereby proclaim November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Gaston, and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities, and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. Thank you. I would just like to say that the awareness that we need, lung cancer is a very serious condition. Thank you. condition. If you don't have, and I say that, I tell people all the time. I have a brother who has a second chance at life because he had bilateral lung transplant, and he received the lungs of a 26-year-old, 26-year-old, but somebody had to die that he might live. And so lung cancer is a very serious thing, and we should really be concerned about the awareness of it. Our next item on our agenda is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property at 1504 Robinson Avenue in District 2. And this resolution was tabled for 30 days on October the 13th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 507 Cherry Street in District 5. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on October the 13th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to table this for an additional 30 days.
Clerk, will you take, are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
The next item, there's no action that will be necessary regarding a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 316 Howell Circle in District 6. The nuisance has already been abated by the owner.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we get too far away from item number nine under unfinished business, the recommendation was made by the building department that we table that recommend, table that for 30 days?
Which item?
Item number nine.
Nine A.
Nine A, I'm sorry.
Okay, nine A. Okay.
So if.
So let's go, we'll go back to address item A. This is where there was a resolution to table for 30 days. It was tabled on October the 13th. So now, what is the pleasure?
All right, the recommend, I make a motion that we table for an additional 30 days.
Second.
Do we need to rescind the first one?
That's what I was going to ask the clerk.
Lee?
The former clerk.
Yeah, we do. I'm watching for a second.
Okay. So I make a motion that we rescind the initial, the original vote?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of rescinding the previous vote on item number nine A, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Now I make a motion that we table this item for an additional 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of tabling item number nine A for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table 30 days.
Thank you.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1138 Goodyear Avenue in District 2. Thomas Elmore and Gretchen O. Howard has been the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves trash and debris and abandoned vehicles. We've actually had five cases at this location in the past two years. There have been no improvements. We're asking for a resolution today to allow us to go into the property and clean this. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
I'm sorry, who made the motion to, okay.
He's running off on them.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 902 Rogers Street in District 3. Zelma O. Johnson being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, this case involves a due place. We filed it in October of 2019. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 803 South 11th Street in District 5. Priestley Legacy LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, this case was filed in May of this year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Lee did it.
Item 13 is no action by the council is necessary regarding the resolution on an abatement on the property at 3421 William Avenue in District 7. The nuisance has already been abated by the owner. Our next public hearing is a resolution approving an issuance of an alcoholic beverage license in Slacky Big Chief LLC. And this is the downtown chief has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license at 210 Locust Street, Suite A in District 3. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license, and this is the Alley Gaston LLC. The Alley has applied for a special retail more than 30-days license at 1001 Rainbow Drive, Suite 1 in District 4. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
To adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, Cracker Barrel, 96396 has applied for a retail liquor license at 101 Taylor Drive in District 6. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
A no. Two no's.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution authorizing an economic development agreement with De Sandro's Enterprise LLC and Fourth Avenue Supermarket and Company to locate a Fresh Value Grocery Store at 2509 West Megan Boulevard. This is to grant a rebate of 40% of the city's 5% sales tax proceeds for a period of five years from the opening date until a total of $780,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd speak in favor of this. This is going with the Old Country World Building in Alabama City. The people in Alabama City want a park south Gaston, the mountain all over deserves something where we can go and get our groceries at, and this is going to be a win-win for everybody. I'm hoping maybe they'll be open by April, if not sooner. They're going in there and spending a lot of money on this project. The owners are going to do some renovations to the parking lot, work on the parking lot also. Had the chance in my life to go down to Trustville to see this grocery store. Went in, talked to a lot of people down there that worked there, and sure they'd enjoy working with us, this chain here. And this is going to be a nice store. It's going to be affordable for us, and I think it's going to be a good asset to Alabama City.
Clerk, will you take the vote? We've already voted.
We need a motion.
Okay.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution authorize agreement with Comcast, and this is for internet service for the police department for two-year term at a discount rate of $90 per month for the first year and increasing to $110 per month for the second year. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next authorized resolution is authorizing agreement with Spark Light, and this is for the power of fabric 205 static IPs to provide faster internet service outbound from the police department to the police annex office, and the amount is $168.65 per month. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? Are there any committee reports? We have one citizen request, Savannah Miles, Community Protector Project. So I've already said your name, so if you just tell us again and your address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. My name is Savannah Miles. I live at 201 Bay Street, so Councilman Bax's district. Thank y'all for allowing me to address you. I believe this is the third time this year, but I promise this time I'm not coming with a list of demands or asking for money or anything like that. I'm really coming with the spirit of collaboration and with the spirit of a solution to the divisions that we've seen in our community, not only this year and this summer, but over my whole life. So I am the grant coordinator for the Community Protectors Project, which is a new faith-based community organizing coalition. We're working to challenge divisive narratives around race and class through education, collaboration, and teaching the word of Jesus. I'll be honest, this is a lifelong dream made possible by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. We've got a grant over the summer for $100,000 to do this project, and I'm just hoping and praying that we're able to come together in unity as a community. And I'm asking here, I'll tell you a little bit about the project, really just for nothing more than your prayers and your support and just, you know, your willingness to help this project succeed and cross some divisions in the county. So the way that the project is going to work is it's a year-long project, and it goes forward in three phases. So the first phase, which we've opened up recruitment for now, is a community Bible study. It's going to be led by a faith leader out of Birmingham, but we're bringing together congregations and individuals from all across the county to study scripture and to see what Jesus says and calls us to do with some of the most pressing issues in our community. We're going to talk about what Jesus calls us to do for our community and with our community. The next phase, we're going to be doing leadership development and community care classes. I know y'all get a lot of requests for citizens or from citizens, right? And I remember last time we spoke that we talked about needing more civic engagement, and I agree. And that's what this second phase is all about. The first phase is about a change of hearts, right? Looking at scripture, looking at our shared values. The second phase is about getting citizens involved and engaged in our community. And then the third phase, I'm really hoping will help y'all, y'all do y'all's job a little bit easier. We're going to be doing a community council where we have representatives from the community, from churches all across the county, to look at what issues we have in common, what challenges we're facing as a community, and what solutions we can come up with to actually address them. Hopefully, we'll be able to do a lot of that just by community work, and we may come to you and ask, you know, for your support. But again, the goal here is really to develop unity in this county. You know, growing up, it broke my heart to see the divisions. And I grew up in District 5, one of the most racially diverse districts in the community, and we struggled a lot, you know, in our community. We had challenges, but often there are these divisions that kept us from coming together to figure out a solution. And I know that we've seen this year. So we're grateful again to have the support of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. I have a team of two other people who will be working on this project. And we're also able to provide blessings to every single participant for this project. So no one is barred from participating due to their income or due to their inability to find childcare. Just so y'all know, I know y'all concerns about COVID. Everything is going to be virtual. All the classes are going to occur online, and we're still going to have that spirit of coming together thanks to technology and Zoom. So again, I just wanted to come back and update y'all, let you know what we're going to be working on over the next year. If there's any churches that you attend or that you know who might be interested in participating, I would be so, so grateful. And beyond that, I just ask for your prayers that, you know, God calls it on our community to come together and just change it for the better. Thank you.
Where is this going to be housed? I know you said virtual, but say if it wasn't virtual, where would, where would this program be housed?
Yes, ma'am. So it is all just occurring on Zoom. We have kind of our home offices that we're working from. We're going to be working with the Gemile Foundation as our sponsoring organization. They're a national faith-based organizing network, so really excited about that.
Hey, I've just got a couple of questions.
Of course.
I've been getting texts from last week or so, and you probably the only one can clear it up for me because I don't really know. I've looked at some stuff. Y'all did get a $100,000 grant, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're just going to spend $50,000 of it. Is that correct?
Not exactly. To clarify, half of the $50,000 is going toward, or half of the hundreds, so 50 is going towards paying the three staff people. We're splitting that equally among the three of us. And then the other half, we're giving 50,000 directly to the community.
Okay. Is this going to be, are y'all going to be teaching out of the Bible?
Yes, sir. Where the first four months is all a scripture-based Bible study class.
There won't be nothing added to or taken away, correct?
Well, we'll be talking about how the scriptures apply to the issues of today. So we will be talking about challenging divisions, things like racial inequality, economic inequality in the community, and what Jesus says about that.
But it won't be added to or taken away, correct?
I sure hope not. We do have an ordained faith leader.
The next question I got was somebody sent me something that said that, now, this is what I got, that said that each participant that comes will be paid like $25.
Yes.
Like if you go to one session on Zoom and you lock in, y'all will pay them $25, correct?
So, yes, sir. We're giving out $25. So, yes, sir, we're giving out $25 gift certificates to Walmart. So, again, so anybody regardless of income can participate.
And then there was another email I got said that if you, and I don't know how you could do this, if you host one, you'll get $100, is that true?
So the spirit of becoming a group leader, a church representative, that is, we're asking folks if they would like to organize a group in their church or congregation to do that extra little bit of work to get folks signed up on the study, participating, then they would get an extra $100 blessing. Yes, sir.
So how would you go about doing something like that with COVID?
So it's actually pretty incredible. Walmart, you can just buy gift cards online and send them through email. So I do have some experience distributing gift cards and learned some lessons from that, and doing it directly virtually, getting it directly to the email address, we won't have to worry about any missed cards, any issues of losing cards, getting lost in the mail, anything like that. It's all virtual.
So you won't be trying to take anybody from any other churches, correct?
No, sir. This is a interfaith community collaboration, so any congregation is more than welcome to participate.
And all that's, when you, all the things that he asked you that you said, that's written in your grant, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am, it's to the word.
You know, people ask a lot of questions, but those are things that are written in the grant, and you wouldn't have got the grant if it was not written in it as far as what they were looking for and what they were asking for. So basically, everything you're doing is legal.
Yes, ma'am.
I shouldn't even say this, but you are doing something wonderful.
Good.
Good.
Yeah.
For our community, but you're going to always have people, the naysayers, that say, hey, you know what, never mind, you're doing a good job.
I'll finish it, I'll finish it because I, it's just, it's really, it's really unbelievable when you have something that's at its core pure and at its core meaningful for the community. When you have, under the guise of religion, people come to the table and make the case that there's something wrong with it. And honestly, if you don't want to support it, don't support it, but it's faith-based, which should take some of the edge off for people. It's a good initiative. It's being funded by a huge grant, and what we encourage people to do is just give it a chance. Don't kill it before it gets started, just give it a chance. I think it's a great initiative, and it's, again, it's being funded, it's being funded by a huge grant, and it serves to make this community much better. Again, it lends itself to some of our underlying concerns and our underlying issues, and it's scary what's out there. I mean, the fact that people would nitpick this is beyond me.
And you just did, what you, part of what you did was what, when you came before, and I made the challenge that you all get involved in the community, get involved civically, because that's what's wrong, you know? People don't know what's going on because they're listening to other people, but you all are getting, and we want the young people to get involved. As you look around the dais up here, starting on that end and going all the way around to this. I said start on this end and going around this end, we won't be up here very long. And so we need young people with young ideas, but they need to be involved, and they need to be trained to know what's going on. So I do appreciate you all at least taking that arm of what we had said when you came before, to get involved, and to get involved civically and not necessarily just listen to, you know, we are people that's big on talk but short on action. So I appreciate you, and hopefully that this can go.
What will happen when the money runs out? What will y'all do then? I mean, will it keep going?
Like most grants?
God willing, we'll either be able to raise additional funding, or there is an opportunity to get a million dollars from Gates if the project is successful.
I didn't know how.
In that case, I want to join. Absolutely. I've been here a long time, and I intend to be here a while longer, but I look at this, Savannah, and I know you got the money. If you misspend it, they're going to come get you.
That's right.
So it's an audible situation, so I'm not worried about it.
Savannah, I'd like to echo sentiments from President Toles of your action. This is your third time to come, and so this is, but you're answering the call, you're doing what I think the Lord's led you to do. I'd like to participate. How can I participate? I mean, how can I attend the meetings, and how can I be a part of the discussion?
I don't think he can get $25.
I don't want $25, you can give that to.
He wants a hundred.
We want to make sure.
You can give my $25 to Johnny, but I support.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like to see what y'all, I mean, I'm excited. This is exactly what our community needs, is dialogue, and I think that if it's a one-way dialogue, if it's all 21-year-old people happy, then what about the 61-year-olds? So I'd like to participate. How can I do that?
Well, thank you so much, and we have a website on Facebook, Community Protectors Project. If you go to our Facebook page and click our website, there's an interest form to fill out, and I'll be contacting everyone who fills that out just to get them up to speed, so I'll be calling you. And we're looking to start classes the first week of December.
Savannah, no gifts or tributes for you.
Yes, there is an option to opt out and pass on the blessing.
I'll be opting out, I just, you know, this is how you learn, this is for public, I mean, I have a 28-year-old daughter that has really taught me a lot. She's good friends with Savannah, and I've learned that if you listen, sometimes you can learn something. And I think I've got a lot to learn, so I'm very willing to be open and to listen, and I look forward to it. Thanks for what you're doing. Tell Bill Gates I said, hey.
To that point, you know, Savannah, I know you've done it, and Kent just, Councilman Back just did it, but the city of Gaston is very pleased to even be on the radar for a program like this.
That type of money. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
I would like to get with you later.
Yes, please.
Not this though, but something else.
Yes, absolutely. I appreciate y'all.
He can't get any money either.
That's all right, we'll pass it on. And anytime, any questions, I'm happy to share my proposal. I hope this is, continues an open dialogue. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Wilson, we'll start with you. You wasn't here, we missed you, so we'll let you start us off today.
In the words of the great country western singer, Boyz Fowley, "I'll start talking again when I know what to say."
All right.
We won't ever hear from him. That's all I got to say.
I want to challenge you that we missed him. You're the one that said it, not me.
Well, I miss you, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, then we'll go with Councilman Reed.
Well, we're on the record for that anyway. I just want to say, this remarks?
Yes.
I happened to be at Forest Cemetery Sunday, and y'all, they have cut the grass, they've weed eat it, everything looks real good. I just have one complaint, and I meant to make it to Frankie or somebody before, coming up in the back at the Veterans Park, the flag is frayed and hung up in a tree. And I really didn't appreciate that, if you don't know the truth. Then I got around to the front on the main flagpole, there's not even a flag up there. They do have a rope, so I would ask at this time that somebody get out there, get that flag out of the tree and put one up in the front. That's what they're for, flagpole, have a flag. So I appreciate it. Thank you. That was for the Patriots also.
I can understand how you feel. I remember instead of somebody calling me, they called the Board of Education because my students put the flag upside down.
Well, they're distressed, and they still are. I'm going to tell you though, if Billy Harris had been with me, we'd have climbed that pole, right, Billy?
Now, now you've gone, now you've gone the line now. Billy ain't going to climb no pole.
We did have a rope, we had a rope.
Y'all might have sawed it down, but you weren't climbing.
That's Billy sitting right there. We've done things worse than climbing that pole.
Now, they did outright lying.
Councilman Cannon?
Smart aleck.
Thank you, Councilman President Toles. I just want to say that if you don't ask questions, you don't learn anything. I'm kind of grounded in my faith, I guess that's what you would say, and I just want to make sure things up on the up and up, and there are people that's doing this or that's attending really get what the meaning is of Christ, our Lord and Savior. He died for all of us on the cross, we know that, and I just want to make sure those questions I asked was answered today, and that was answered, and I just hope that I didn't offend anybody. I must have up here, but you know, that's my job to ask questions, and I've got folks that's asking me questions, and I don't know, I go to the source and find out. That's the way you're supposed to go, the source, don't ask somebody else that probably don't know more than you do, go to the source, somebody that knows. I'm going to get off that and get on to leaf season. We already started leaf season in City of Gaston. Do not put your leaves in the gutters, do not stop up the drains, whether we're going to have rain, when the rain comes, all the leaves in the curbs and gutters wash down to the drain, then we have more problems. Just put your leaves out in front of your house. If you can bag them, that would be really good for us. If you can't, just put them right, before you don't put them on the curb, put them outside the curb, on the inside of it, not the outside. And hopefully, if it keeps going like it goes, maybe by Christmas or a little bit after, we'll have them all up. As long as the rain comes, cold weather comes, and they're falling like that, we shouldn't have any problem this year. And I do want to say, I'm tickled to death that the grocery store's coming to Alabama City, and please, 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 keep wearing your mask, don't take them off. I take mine off when I'm up here speaking so I can breathe, but you know, you can buy different masks now, you can get all kind you want. If the one you've got you can't breathe out, try to go find you another one, and you can find one eventually that you can wear. I promise you, that's all I got.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to reiterate too, please wear the mask. It ain't because, we've been preaching this ever since this started, and you have some people that just won't do it no matter what, but think about the healthcare workers, you know? This mask not only stopped me from spreading it if I have it, but it's a chance it's going to stop you from catching it, at least, you know, cut down on the virus, the amount of virus you get, and maybe you won't get as sick. But anyway, I'm going to make a couple of announcements. Thanksgiving, we'll do the Thanksgiving dinner at Carver Community Center starting at 11:00 on Thanksgiving Day, 11:02 to go plates. And then I have one other announcement. Union Baptist Church located at 613 Henry Street, Gaston, Alabama, will be giving away 100 bags of perishable food items in a community drive-through on November 25th, starting at 9:00 a.m. So that's the first 100 people. Thank you.
Councilman Wade?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me say this, Councilman Cannon, you definitely have every right to ask your questions, and I think by and large you were conveying questions, some of them anyway, that were asked of you, and so there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that. I just, I think for me, more than anything, you know, if you haven't figured it out yet, I'm a history guy, and I don't dwell on the past, but I definitely don't forget the past. And over the years, whether you're talking about justifications for slavery or justifications for imperialism, there have, we have used the word of God, and I want to emphasize the word "used" to justify sinful manners, and we have, we have used the word of God to convince people that sin was right. And I want to be clear, you know, that's a faith-based initiative, and I think the word of God doesn't need us. It stands on its own. The word of God doesn't need us. We need it, and the word of God stands on its own. And so, again, continue the good work. I'm excited that the city of Gaston is associated with such a program, and I really look forward to seeing some of the benefit, because I think the theme that was spoken to very early, early on, is it is a unifying effort, something that's designed to bring the community together. And so we don't, we don't need any more divisiveness. We need unity. We've seen enough divisiveness. The last thing I'll say is, you know, I want to, I want to, I want to thank all of those who have taken the opportunity over the last week or so to recognize our veterans. You know, we can't do enough of that, you know, in the midst of where we are right now as a nation, groups are trying to hijack patriotism. But I can tell you that I wore the uniform proudly, and I proudly stand as a veteran, and I know Councilman Reed does, I know Councilman Worthy does, and we need to, we need to continue, you know, not even, not just on Veterans Day, but Memorial Day, Memorial Day, and any other day we get the opportunity to continue to recognize our veterans, because it's because of them that many of us were able to exercise in record numbers our right to vote in this past election. So, thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of announcements. First Baptist Church at the corner of Fifth and Walden Street, we'll be having a food distribution tomorrow, starting at around 12:00. Should be a good distribution, so encourage everybody to come by and pick up some food. This should be good holiday food for Thanksgiving holiday. Also a reminder Salvation Army, in this COVID season, you know, we can't do like we would normally do, so there's virtual bell ringing, and there's a lot of ways to give and donate to Salvation Army. It couldn't be a worse storm for the Salvation Army. We're probably getting more opportunities to serve needy people than we've ever had before, yet we're having less money than we've ever had before. So, you know, Salvation Army has served Edwah County for 104 years, and we're going to continue to do that, but we need your help. So when you see or hear a bell ringing, or if you see a kettle, please, please contribute and please help us. Want to say thanks to a lot of people. I see two of our new business owners here in Gaston today, The Alley and The Downtown Chief. I had a recent conversation with a friend that talked about how, kind of how poor Gaston was doing, and you know, and I really bristle at that because I just don't believe that. I think Gaston's doing very well, especially during this season. There are so many new businesses coming to Gaston, and yes, I understand that these are not huge manufacturing companies paying a lot of money, but these businesses are very important to the families that put their life savings into these businesses and to the employees that they hire. Those jobs and those companies are critical. It's also critical to know that the city of Gaston receives most of our revenue from sales tax. So you guys are generating sales tax and generating revenue for the city of Gaston. Thank you. Thank you for your vision, thank you for your dream and living that dream, and thank you for choosing Gaston to put your business in. I don't want to, it's so hard when you start listing people, but The Alley at the Gaston Mall is about to open. I cannot wait to go in there. I hope I don't hurt myself throwing a bowling ball, but anyway, that'll be my problem. The Downtown Chief ate there yesterday and met the owners, great lunch, and thank y'all for what y'all are doing. The grocery at Canterbury Station, Lisa, thank you for your efforts in doing, yes, sure.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Del Sandro wanted me to thank the council for the rebate, and he's very excited, and he's very good for it.
Wonderful. That's been a long-needed project over in Alabama City and Johnny's district. Burger 101, right across the bridge over here, you can't get in the place. I've been trying to go for a week. Blackstone up on the mountain, the rail moved from the 210 on the tracks to Broad Street. NOLA on Second is about to open, and I'm probably leaving some out, you know, and I, oh, they're already open? Great, that's, so thanks, Lisa. Also thanks to the mayor and to Frankie for the work that you guys do. Y'all kind of work under, and nobody really sees it, but y'all do a lot of stuff, and thanks for what y'all do, and also to David Hooks and Bill Green at our IDA office. What I'm trying to squeeze into five minutes, there's a lot of positive things happening in Gaston. We've got young people stepping up and getting a $100,000 grant from Bill and Melinda Gates. Raise your hand if you've ever received a $100,000 grant, you know, from Bill or from anybody. That's pretty amazing. Thank y'all for what y'all are doing. There's some really good things happening in Gaston. Don't give in to the naysayers that Gaston's dying, or Gaston's this, or Gaston's that. Gaston will be what we make it, and I think we're going, we have a great city, we're going to continue to be a great city and improve, but it takes all of this. It takes individuals like you guys coming and investing your money in our city. We need to support you, and thank you for, thank you for what you're doing. And thank you, Madam President.
This is a question, and I don't know Frankie if you have it, because I'm asking, because a city vehicle was involved just a few minutes ago, was anybody hurt? anybody hurt?
Yes. I just got a quick note, but, uh, I think there was six people in the van that were hurt. I don't know if one person had a cause, a little bit of further force, but, uh, I don't know the, the extent of the injuries.
I just pulled it up on my phone. Somebody sent me some more pictures. The trolley was, it's laying over on the side, the pictures I just received. Our tro, our trolley was laying over on its side, the pictures I just received.
Ms. Ross, were you going to say something?